Good evening. It is five thirty P M on Tuesday, July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Slate Camp, Amelia Boyd, Ben McQuarren, Grant Simmons, and Wayne Benner. We are expecting Most Uncle to arrive shortly. That was short. All right. If everyone will please stand, we'll begin with the reciting of the pledge. Thank you. Are there any general announcements from Commissioners?
Nope.
Seeing none, any from staff, general announcements?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, just a reminder that the Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing will be on August first, and the plan and all of the appendices are up on the city website.
Thank you. And I will just piggyback on that and just let the public know that it is here that Comprehensive Plan has a big sway in how things go down the pike with what happens in the city of Sandpoint. We don't normally get attendance this large, but it's equally important to show up at that comp adoption plan if you would like to see the direction that the city is taking. So just a quick announcement. Is this coming through? It just sounds a little bit unusual to me, but is it coming through back there? Fine. Everybody can hear me A-OK. The back of the room saying good. So, okay. Just a quick announcement before we get started. For those here in the chambers who would like to speak during the public hearing, if you wish to speak, you need to complete a sign-up form which was available on the table by the door over there, and we have staff from Police and Fire sitting at the back table. They will take, please hand your form to them, and do not approach the clerk or staff up here at the front, but rather bring it to the staff that we that we have in the back. Please write legibly and include your first and last name on the form. You will also see options on the form to communicate whether you wish to speak in favor, are neutral, or are opposed to the request. Please check one of those boxes. The final item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on recommendation decision on city application number P Z C twenty-three dash zero 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 one. I will ask for your patience as there is quite a bit of information that needs to be stated for the record before we get underway. This evening, the Commission will be considering a request, a request to rezone a portion of the property at four-two-oh-three North Boyer Road, Bonner County parcel number R P S R P S zero 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 three-six-six-zero-one-A from rural residential one to mixed-use residential, and a portion of the property at four-zero-zero-one North Boyer Road, Bonner County parcel number R P S three-eight-three-five-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-one-A-A from mixed-use residential to rural residential one. Pursuant to Sandpoint City Code and the land use laws of the state of Idaho, what we must consider is whether the rezone request is supported by the adopted City of Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan. For the record, this body is not considering or rendering a decision on a future specific use of these properties. The Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation decision tonight that then goes to the Sandpoint City Council, who will render a final decision at a future public hearing. For the record, the properties to be rezoned are legally described as follows. The portion to be rezoned to RR one is a portion of Lot One, Bonner County Readiness Center located in Section Ten, Township Fifty-seven North, Range Two West, beginning at the northwest corner of Lot One of the Bonner County Readiness Center plat, thence south eighty-nine degrees, twenty-six minutes, thirty-nine seconds east along the northern property line of Lot One, a distance of six hundred and sixteen point, I mean, six hundred and seventeen point one-seven feet, and thence south zero degrees, zero minutes, zero seconds east at a distance of one-five-one-point-five-five feet to the northeast corner of Lot Two of the Bonner County Readiness Center plat, thence south ninety degrees, zero minutes, zero seconds west along the shared property line between Lot One and Lot Two, a distance of six hundred and nineteen feet to the northwest corner of Lot Two, and thence north, zero degrees, forty minutes, eight seconds east, a distance of a hundred and fifty-seven-point-fifty-five feet along the westerly property line of Lot One to the point of beginning. This land is bordered by Samuelson Avenue to the west, the existing Fairgrounds property to the north, and the Bonner County Sheriff's Office to the east. The portion that's looking to be rezoned to multiple use, M U R, a portion of the approximate forty-acre parcel known as the Bonner County Fairgrounds, which is the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section Three, Township Fifty-seven North, Range Two West, beginning at the south quarter corner of Section Three, which is the north quarter corner of Section Ten, and the northeast corner of Lot One of the Bonner County Readiness Center plat, thence north eighty-nine degrees, twenty-six minutes, thirty-nine seconds west for a distance of four hundred and ninety-five-point-one-five feet along the shared property line between Lot One and the fairgrounds to a fence corner, thence north, a distance of twenty-five-point-four-seven feet to a fence corner, thence north eighty-eight degrees, thirty-eight minutes, seven seconds east, a distance of four hundred and ninety-five-point-five-five feet generally along an existing fence to the east line of said southeast quarter of the southwest quarter. Thence south, zero degrees, twenty-three minutes, fourteen seconds west, a distance of forty-two-point-zero-eight feet along said east line to the point of the beginning. This land is located between the playground at the southeast corner of the fairgrounds and the Bonner County Driver's Licensing Office. A notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record, on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. I will now recite the order and procedure for the public hearing. First, we will have the explanation of the subject of the hearing by city staff, then a presentation by the applicant, and please note that Commissioners should address their questions to the applicant at that time. Opening of the public hearing will proceed at which time the public may provide testimony. The order of those providing testimony will be as follows. First in favor, followed by neutral, followed by opposed. The applicant's rebuttal testimony will follow, at which time final questions may be asked of the applicant by the Commissioners. Please note that if new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. We will then close the public hearing, and the Commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided after the hearing has been closed with questions directed only to city staff during deliberation. For the record, any written comments received in time were included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to the Commission. I appreciate your continued patience as we go through all of this information and notes for the record, and at this time, I would like to ask for your specific attention as I recite the city's general rules for participating during public meetings. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to the Commission or to the staff. Do not approach the dais. Also, now that the meeting is underway, please do not approach the clerk or other staff up here at the front tables as this can disrupt the meeting. You may inquire of staff in the back of the room who can provide assistance if needed. Remarks shall be addressed to the Commission as a whole and not to any single member. The person speaking shall face and address only the Commission and shall not turn and address staff or members of the audience. Members of the public are asked to please exercise self-control, to participate in our meeting in an orderly manner, and to focus on the specific issue at hand and avoid personalizing debate. Those speaking shall not make personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of the Commission, staff, or the public. Disorderly or boisterous conduct, which includes loud, threatening, or abusive language, whistling, speaking out of turn, clapping, or other similar acts which disturb, disrupt, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting, are not allowed. I do not anticipate the need for law enforcement assistance this evening, but as city policy dictates, I will make those of you in the room aware that Police Chief Corey Kuhn is in attendance, and he is serving at our sergeant-at-arms for this meeting. I would like to note that this application was submitted by the Bonner County Board of County Commissioners. For the record, although one of those Commissioners, Luke Ahmet, was formerly a member of this body, previously serving as a City of Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commissioner, this issue was not raised or considered during the time Mr. Ahmet served on our commission. Therefore, there is no legal conflict with any testimony he may present or with this commission deliberating and making a recommendation decision on this matter. I will now ask each Commissioner to confirm that they have not had any ex parte contact that would impact your ability to make an impartial, fair decision on the application and that you have no conflict of interest as pertains to this request. Commissioner Benner?
Uh, just for the record, I was a county commissioner for six years, and my daughter informed me I participated in the Bonner County Fair for fourteen years.
Commissioner McQuarren?
No.
Boyd?
No.
I have none. Mr. Kent?
No.
Mr. Dunkle?
None.
Mr. Simmons?
None.
Thank you. At this time, I will yield the floor to City Planner.
Yes.
Oh. I certainly will.
I have no conflict.
Thank you very much. Good catch. At this time, I will yield the floor to City Planner Amy Twetton for an introduction and explanation of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is public hearing on case number P Z C two-three-zero-zero-zero-one. The request is to rezon portions of two Bonner County properties. One is a rezon from rural residential one to mixed-use residential for a portion of parcel number R P S zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-three-six-zero-one-A totaling approximately point-three acres. And the second request is a rezon from mixed-use residential to rural residential one for a portion of parcel R P S three-eight-three-five-zero-one-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-one-A-A totaling approximately two-point-two acres. As shown on the map, the surrounding zoning is rural residential to the north, mixed-use residential to the south, residential multifamily to the west, and rural residential and industrial general to the east. With a rezoning request, the required findings are whether or not proposed zone changes are consistent with Comprehensive Plan, whether or not the proposed zone is consistent and compatible with existing zoning and future land uses in the vicinity of the site, and the Commission must also give consideration to the impact of the rezoning on the delivery of public services by any political subdivision. Uh, just to summarize, a property rezoning is the first step in the development process. At the time of rezoning, the Commission must consider all of the uses in the proposed zoning district when evaluating the requested zoning in relation to the Comprehensive Plan. Any specific use in a rezoning district would be required to follow the development regulations and process particular to that use, whether it is a permitted or conditional use. Uh, again, the existing uses of the subject properties include fairground and public safety facilities. Both properties are served by city utilities. And as shown in the map to the right, the property is within the context area three of the Comprehensive Plan. And context area three is described as supporting development patterns with higher-density residential development through small lot sizes, shared open space, and traditional street grids. C A three is limited to residential uses and does not identify any of the existing uses on the subject properties. The map to the left indicates the area in blue is the area that is being requested to be rezoned to RR one from M U R, and to the right is the property being rezoned from RR one to M U R. Uh, just an overview of the development standards of the two districts. Again, RR one is a residential district, and actually, M U R is falls in the zoning code under the commercial zoning districts. So as you see, the rural residential is more in line with what you would see for residential lots. The one difference from most of our residential districts is it is a large lot, minimum half an acre size. And the mixed-use residential, again, because it is a mix of allowed residential and commercial, has lesser setbacks and greater lot coverage. Uh, uses that are allowed in the rural residential zone, again, that is the area in pink. Uh, the district has both permitted and conditional uses. And again, the permitted uses are primarily residential in nature. It does allow some horticultural uses, home occupations, and then I have just bolded the uses that exist on the site. Permitted are the existing uh, fairground facilities, and then under conditional uses, which is an additional process that any of these uses would have to come back before the Planning and Zoning Commission um, include churches, fire, and police stations, utility facilities, schools, and expansion of any of the fairground facilities. Uses in the M U R district, again, the area in green, uh, and the area shown on the right that would be rezoned from rural residential to mixed-use uh, residential. Permitted, you'll see, we, there is a wide range of residential uses. There's also a wide range of commercial uses allowed in that district uh, at a limited size uh, because it is supposed to be more of a neighborhood commercial type district. So most of the commercial uses are limited to three thousand square feet. Uh, and then I've also identified the uh, existing use that is permitted in that district is public safety facilities, and then there's just uh, a couple of conditional uses, and those are facilities that have a larger footprint. Again, uh, the required findings are whether the request is compatible with the Comprehensive Plan. So starting with the Comprehensive Plan, do the Comprehensive Plan goals and policies support the rezon request to mixed-use residential? Um, again, the plan has many goals and objectives in the different chapters. So, um, as examples of uh, policies that support the request to rezon to M U R uh, would be the land use chapter policy A, encouraging increased density in the C A three and C A four areas while requiring multifamily housing to respect neighborhood character. The M U R district does allow a wide range of housing, so that is supported by that request. Uh, chapter five, housing goal H one policy D, land mixed densities in neighborhoods provide for income diversity among neighborhood residents. Again, that allowance for a mix of housing types supports that policy. And, uh, chapter nine, economic development, goal E three workforce needs, policy A encourage diversity of housing. So again, these are all goals that talk about a wide range of housing, and those are uh, uses that are allowed in the M U R district. Uh, goals that are not supported by the request to rezon to M U R uh, is the recreation goal. R one parks policy E, explore partnership opportunities with other agencies and the private sector to expand parks and recreational offerings and or share costs for providing services and land acquisition. Parks are not a permitted use in the mixed-use residential district. Uh, recreation goal R three, open spaces, policy B, collaborate with land trust cemeteries and other organizations to identify, acquire, or preserve open spaces. Parks and cemeteries are not permitted uses in the mixed-use residential district. And then, um, context area three again envisions only residential uses, and the, um, mixed-use residential district as was shown on a previous slide with all the commercial uses that that district allows, um, is that consistent with the context area three? To the rezoning to rural residential one, uh, what Comprehensive Plan goals and policies support that request? Uh, in the recreation chapter, goal R one parks policy E, explore partnership opportunities with other agencies and the private sector to expand parks and recreation offerings and or share costs for providing services and land acquisition. The RR one district does allow parks and fairgrounds that serve as recreational facilities. Recreation goal R three, open space, policy B, collaborate with land trust cemeteries and other organizations to identify, acquire, and or preserve open spaces. The RR one district is a low-density residential zoning district with more private open space and allowance of parks and fairgrounds. Uh, chapter nine, economic development, goal E one, economic diversity, policy B, encourage localism and innovative techniques to increase circulating dollars within the Sandpoint economy. The RR one district allows home occupations and fairgrounds uh, that hold events supportive of local artisans and press people, farmers, and for H activities. Uh, so that is supportive of that Comprehensive Plan goal. Uh, and then public services, education policy, consider impacts on the school district when considering land use decisions. The RR one district, as noted, is a low-density residential district, um, which would have less impact uh, on the schools potentially, given the reduced number of dwelling units. Policies and goals of the request to rezon to RR one that do not support the Comprehensive Plan. Land use policy A encourage increased density in the context area three and four areas while requiring multifamily housing to respect neighborhood character. Again, the RR one district is a low-density, not a high-density district. And also housing goal, policy D, and, um, workforce needs, policy A, all speak to the need to increase density and dwelling units. Um, the RR one district being a low-density zoning district does not support um, those goals of the Comprehensive Plan. Following public testimony and subsequent deliberations, the Planning and Zoning Commission may take one of the following actions in accordance with Sandpoint City Code nine-nine-nine-A. Make a recommendation to the City Council for approval or denial of the request at the first available regular council meeting following the planning commission's hearing. The recommendation shall state specifically what grounds or statutes said recommendation is based. Due to the request being a rezon of only a portion of a platted lot, which is R P S and a portion of an unplatted parcel, R P S zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-three-six-six-zero-one-A. Any motion to approve the request by the Commission should recommend approval of a development agreement that will require a plating action to correspond to the rezoning. Uh, and the second option for the Commission is to postpone consideration of the application to consult with its advisors and staff to make a recommendation to the City Council within forty days after such hearing. Again, uh, just an overview of the parcels being requested for rezoning. The area in blue is the area being requested to be rezoned from mixed-use residential to RR one, and the area in red is being requested to be rezoned from RR one to mixed-use residential. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do Commissioners have any question for staff at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. McQuarren.
Um. Amy, can you please clarify, just restate what uses are allowed by the RR one?
Right. Let's, I'll go on. So in the RR one, they're permitted in conditional uses. So the permitted uses are single-family dwellings, horticultural uses for personal use, tree farms, home occupations, accessory dwelling units, uh, short-term rentals subject to Title Three, Chapter Twelve, parks and fairground facilities and related events and activities that were existing as of January thirteenth, nineteen ninety-eight. Conditional uses are churches, police and fire stations, public utility facilities, schools, and expansion of existing or addition of new fairground facilities and events.
And so this, the fairground facilities and events, the additional details on the limits found in that section there? So is there limitations on what? It sounds like it's a very broad fairground facilities. Like, what do we know more? What does that mean?
It, well, it's facilities that are part of the fairgrounds. So, yeah, is that defined? No, that is not defined.
That's not defined. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Okay. Well, next will be the applicant's presentation. As a reminder, Commissioners should address their questions to the applicant at the time of their presentation. I yield the floor to the applicant.
Jeff Jensen, Sewing Associates, representing the applicant, yes. So Amy did a great job of explaining what we wanted to do. We're more or less rezoning to match existing uses at both the fairgrounds and the sheriff's office facility. We're going along fence lines. Uh, the uses are in line with the Comprehensive Plan, and they're in line with the existing uses out there. The rezoning is is part of the replat process that will be undertaken to, again, maybe shouldn't, to kind of clean up some of those existing uses and overlap and align them better with actual or proposed and actual property lines out there. That's kind of the goal. That's that's really all there is to it. There's not a lot more to explain. As, as you can see it. I know we're not talking about specific proposed uses in the future. This is part of a process, but it's just the rezoning of the property at this point, not what's going to happen on those pieces of property in the future. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Boyd.
Um. Mr. Jensen, the proposed M U R, what are the dimensions of that piece of property? I know it's point.
Within that, oh, like, just the the proposed M U R is like point-three acres. Isn't that what it says?
Yeah, point-two-eight. Are the dimensions? I mean, it's such a skinny plot. I was just curious about the size dimensions.
Um, I can't remember off the top of my head. I think you read it.
It was in the reading, yes. It's.
It's in the reading. I want to say it's like four hundred feet or something like that.
Yeah.
By like twenty-five feet. There's an existing fence line there that kind of is attached to. By like twenty five feet. There's an existing fence line there that kind of is attached to. The sheriff's office facility and the um the driver business division, and it basically just falls that fence line.
Good. I have a question then following up on that. Is that fence line just kind of like a fence line of convenience? That fence line is not part of the security fence line for the current sheriff facility, or is it?
I'm not. I don't know the answer to that question.
Thank you.
It's a tall fence. I don't believe it has like razor wire or anything like that on top of it.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant before we proceed with the public hearing?
Here.
Mister Dunkle.
Um, you said that you believe that it falls within the current comp plan. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, as Amy presented, like you're. It's part of the existing fairgrounds facilities. That's where like the fairgrounds is being used as as existing facilities there. Um, it would provide. Now, I just lost my train of thought. Amy did a better job of explaining it to me. It provides, let's see, or supports, so it's. It allows parks and recreational facilities. Um, it would promote economic development by increasing the capacity in the area of fairgrounds. Um, and then the mixed use residential side of it is just conforming to the existing use, more or less.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Carrying notes there. Thank you.
All right.
So we'll now prepare to proceed with the public hearing. Um, do we have Zoom participants this evening?
Mister Chairman, I do not believe we have anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak on this matter.
Thank you. We can check in again later. If you wish to, uh, we'll hold off on that. So as announced earlier to those here in the chamber, if you would like to speak, you need to complete a sign up form. If you haven't done that, you can still do that. Forms are back there in the table. Give them to the staff uh in the back of the room. And they'll bring them up to the clerk. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. City policy provides that the presiding officer may allow time to be gifted during a public hearing. And I will allow this option this evening. Those present who wish to speak may gift your time to another speaker who is also present in the room. You may only do so once, and the maximum amount of time any single speaker will be allowed to present is six minutes. If you are gifted time, please state who has gifted the time to you when you approach the dais. You both must have completed a sign up form to complete that. So we will now begin the public hearing. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up who would like to testify in favor of this?
Uh, no, Mister Chairman.
Do we have anyone signed up who would like to testify who is neutral?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone signed up to testify who is opposed?
Yes, Mister Chairman, one moment.
Okay.
Sheriff Daryl Wheeler.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mister Chairman and Planning Zone Planning and Zoning Board. Um, I I would like uh an an extra three minutes if the chair. Provides, and I do have Tricia Boland who has uh.
And to have signed up.
Yes. Thank you very much.
So be it.
So, uh, Commission, I have reviewed your posted rezone application and requirement in the application. Process instructions pertaining to the Sandpoint City Rezone Application. Filed by Bonner County Commissioner Luke Ommitt. Per Idaho Code twenty two dash two oh four. Luke Ommitt lacks statutory authority to exclusive to be the exclusive applicant for the proposed land lose. Land land use change. In twenty two two oh four, that law requires that the county board. Be part of the fairgrounds related land use planning activities. Therefore, the county fair board is necessary party to this application. County property used for fairgrounds is included under property information noted on the application as parcel. R S zero R S zero 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 three six zero one O A, which in parentheses is fairground. And in the application, it was identified as fairgrounds parcel located at forty two oh three North Forrester Road. Fairgrounds. The mere fact that the city's rezone application requests the fee simple owner applicant to indemnify the city. For its wrong does not absolve the city from illegally processing. A land new use change in contravention of Idaho statute. Although the city's application requires requirements require the owner of record to submit a rezone application. The authority to apply must otherwise conform to the Idaho code. The fair board is an independent office, which independent officers and has a right and responsibility to control land uses. For fair purposes. The fair board is a top level controller of fair related land uses. Per Idaho Code twenty two two oh four and twenty two oh four solemnizes the county fair boards planning. Prerogatives by stating that such plans shall be filed with the Board of County Commissioners of the county. No such plans have been filed with the Bonner County B O C. Uh, in twenty two oh four states, pertinent part duties of the county board, but board members meeting further duties. The county fair board shall be charged with the care and custody of all property belonging to the county. And used for fair purposes and shall be responsible for all monies received by it raised by tax levy. And levy for purposes as well as receipts from its operation and fare of any money received. And it goes on. Oh, that's good. And it goes on that noted in the second paragraph, it shall be formulated in writing and file in the office. All plans adopted by it and from time to time in connection for the conduct of business of the county fair and also file. A copy of the same with the Board of County Commissioners of the county. Again, the county. The Bonner County Fair Board has filed no such mandatory planning documents with the. Bu- Bonner County Board of Commissioners, consequently, the city. In the city proceeding with this application would be a violation of Idaho Code twenty two two zero four. Not only has the Bonner County Fair Board not affirmatively planned for this proposed land use that is. Uh, affirmatively opposed the Bonner County Commissioners' proposed campground expansion. The opposition was cited as a factor in the grant extension denial later letter dated June twenty first. Two thousand and twenty three written by Idaho Parks and Rec Director Susan Buxton. I've included that letter in my original. Comments. An additional requirement noted in the proposed rezone applications. Requires an applicant process instruction is required letter of explanation. And justification for the proposed project in the submitted application packet by Luke Ommitt. It stated need to rezone the fairgrounds property was to expand the existing R V park spots located on the fairgrounds. In conclusion, I do not support the approval of this application of the Planning and Zoning. Uh, Commission and Luke Ommitt is acting in excess of statutory authority and illegally usurping. The authority of the Bonner County Fair Board. Further, the city of Sandpoint should not be complicit. In violation of Idaho law simply because it is indemnified by the county. This application for the rezone was signed by Luke Ommitt on May twenty third, two thousand and twenty three. The detailed later of that letter of explanation was written by Jeff Jensen of Sewell Engineering. On June eighth, two twenty two to two thousand and twenty three. And a memorandum of was passed by two county commissioners to prove an application be submitted on June sixteenth. Two thousand and twenty three. I have a question for the board. Was the application for the resort accepted prior to June sixteen? If so, Luke Ommitt has submitted an unauthorized application with deems it void. And should cause this board to cancel the meeting and require a new application for both the fair board and the Board of County Commissioners. As applicants to this rezone request. And in answering your question earlier, Mister Chairman, the fence between the sheriff's office and the and the fairgrounds. Is a security fence and it has two strands of barbed wire along the top to keep people from coming into our facility. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you and thank you for the clarification on that point. Madam Clerk, do we have others?
We do. One moment, Mister Chairman.
Thank you.
Cheryl Messer.
Commissioners, um, thank you for listening. Um, I just wanna. Also agree with what the sheriff has said. Um, the application was put in uh for the fairgrounds campground to be down on. That particular property, which in the past has been reserved for a readiness center. Um, Idaho Code. Sixty seven, six, five, one, one, two, A requires particular consideration to be given to any proposed. Zone change upon the delivery of public services. By any political subdivision providing public services, including school districts within the planning jurisdiction. So some of the things that um public services that are on the Justice Services Readiness Center. Property from which the effects of rezoning may. Um, or a C O P may be felt are driver's license. Detective's unit, records building, evidence building, shop fleet building, marine division, dispatch. Sheriff's Office Administration, K nine, search and rescue, jail, and impound yard, juvenile detention. Parking for all employees and and public and emergency services, vehicles, boats, et cetera. Then we have. The possibility of the courthouse, the prosecuting attorney's office, the public defender's office that may need relocation. And expansion along with all of these facilities that are already there. Um, and with that, no actual study has been made of the needs of the county justice services. For the um. Readiness land, readiness center land. And as a taxpayer, I don't want to have. To buy more land to provide these services. And so I just ask you to please consider those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Asia Williams.
And rush to another meeting. I just wanted to make one comment was that what you guys are looking at is how does this plan fit into your current comp plan? And one of the things that is missing is the fair board's desire for this move. The fair board is not the applicant. The fair board was actually. Very clear with this particular project that they were not interested in this. And so that that in of itself doesn't make this fit within your comprehensive plan. The other issue is is that the growth and expansion that is happening in Bonner County, which is directly impacting Sandpoint. Requires the county to have an ability for expansion, which if we encumber that land with a project that is already questionable. We will not be able to meet the needs of Sandpoint residents, let alone Bonner County residents. But a key person is missing from this application, and that is the fair board. The applicant said that one of the ways it fit within your comp plan was it was going to provide fairground activities. Fairground clearly told the grant when it was time for an extension that they were not involved, and that is actually one of the reasons for the denial of the grant. So it is reasonable that this application be denied until such application is accompanied by the person who is required to manage that. Particular parcel for the use that is being pushed in. We don't need to rezone this particular parcel. Because there has been no application resubmitted inclusive of the fairgrounds to use this particular piece of land. So I don't want to bore you with all of the IDAPA rules that everybody has stated regarding this particular rezone. But unless the fairground is here saying we need this rezone to move forward and gives you how it fits in with the comp plan. You have us trying to force it from the Board of County Commissioners, and I don't think that that is what fits in the comprehensive plan of Sandpoint.
Thank you.
Fred Arm.
I signed up to give my three minutes to someone my wife.
I I don't see volunteers for that. Who is bold enough to? Do we have others?
Mister Chairman, no one else has signed up to.
Okay, and has anybody on Zoom raised a hand? They would like to speak?
No.
Is there anybody here in the audience who has not prior signed up but would still like an opportunity to speak? Okay. And before we close the public hearing, uh, does the applicant care to offer any rebuttal testimony? And just a reminder, if new facts are elicited during rebuttal, then the public will be given an opportunity to comment on those new facts.
Yes, Mister Chair.
And is that? Acceptable? Is this, are you considered the applicant? I'm just asking.
I think the applicant is Mister Jensen.
I'm Commissioner Ollin.
I understand, but uh Mister Jensen identified himself as the representative for the county, the applicant.
He he can if he wants to sign up and and speak as and have his three minutes like anybody else here did. I just want to, I want to look to council, make sure that's acceptable.
If he is testifying only in a capacity as a individual, not as the applicant.
As a citizen, yes.
Yes, that's permitted.
Okay, um, and and after the fact, you can fill out the form so that it's public record, correct? If you haven't filled it out so far. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you. Uh, I guess I'm speaking as a county commissioner, not the applicant. So in reference to some of the comments that were made, there was an M O U that was signed between the fair board. And between the Board of County Commissioners of this year. And I sent it to Amy as I was sitting here listening to the comments, so that could be entered. And one of the general provisions is very specific. And it is the management of other property of which are the part of the pieces in question. The county shall have exclusive authority to manage all other county owned property in proximity of the fairgrounds, specifically. Those lots upon which law enforcement resources are currently situated, which is the one where we're trying to go to RR one. And because I get to speak in three minutes and I'm not the applicant to introduce additional minutes. Something for consideration is that right of way agreement that came forward of Samuelson Avenue is going to take approximately two acres. Of fairgrounds property. So the fairgrounds, as has been brought forward, and the uses in Bonner County has grown. When the fit, when the county purchased that land in nineteen sixty. It was because the county did, or the city, excuse me, did not extend the lease. In two thousand and eight, when that uh park was built just adjacent to Boyer. There was an M O U signed allowing the fairgrounds to utilize that for parking. And I speak also as someone who has the unique experience of not only camping in that area. But also having served in the armory that used to occur. And there have been a number of iterations throughout this. But to really bring it down to encapsulate what the Board of Commissioners' goal is. Is to recognize that uses change, but we want to have the opportunity. To utilize that ground in its existing zoning, and we're trying to clean up. The lines as we prepare for the growth, looking at recreation and what uses we have moving forward. Uh, Mister Dunkle asked in regards to the comp plan. It's in recreation. If you would have been there for lost in the fifties, you would have seen a bunch of RVs that were camping in a nice big empty field. So the Board of Commissioners has removed encumbrances and the. So the Board of Commissioners has removed encumbrances, and the Board of Commissioners is in support of this rezon project because we believe that it will best serve the county moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Jensen, as the applicant, do you have any rebuttal? And was there anything considered new information that allowed for the reopening of public comment?
No, Mr. Chair.
My counsel is telling me no, that there was not new information. So. And Commissioners, any final questions for the applicant before we close the public hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The um, and I apologize.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes, thank you. Um, and why the request? I'm still not not getting it. I apologize.
Um, the the request is so that that two-point-two acres there at the
Behind, yeah.
Behind the fairgrounds can be transferred to the fairgrounds parcel and uh, fairgrounds facilities can be expanded on that. The the proposed facilities need to be attached to that parcel. And the only way to do that is to rezone, conditional use permit, and then a replat to change the boundaries of that parcel.
So the specific intended uses for fairground expansion, the reason I was asking is multi-user residential has a much broader sort of usage.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
But it it's it's for the intent to eventually expand the fairgrounds facilities in that in that corner.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Thank you, sir. The uh, public hearing is now closed. And uh, no, no, no new information may be provided and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. So we, as a commission, will now deliberate. Anybody have comments? Commissioner Boyd, it looks like you're ready to go.
I have a question for legal. Um, I read Idaho Code while Sheriff was talking twenty-two dash two zero four. What is the legal interpretation of that in regards to this proceeding?
Commissioner, Commissioner Boyd, this is Zach Jones for the record, and um, it's our position that the twenty-two, twenty dash two zero four provides that the county commissioners are the appropriate applicant in this in this um hearing. First of all, with respect to the two-acre parcel, that is not a a part, a parcel that's governed by the board. That's a partial, a part, the parcel that's owned by the sheriff's department. It's a different parcel. And so for that particular parcel, the Fair Board isn't, that's not part of the conversation. For the point two or excuse me, point three acre parcel, twenty-two zero four provides two things. First of all, it provides the Fair Board with exclusive management um over the fair. And that's a pretty powerful um provision. However, with respect to real property, it provides that the county commissioners designate real property that is supposed to be fairgrounds, and that it's the prerogative of the Fair Board to operate under the comm- commissioners um designation of what the fairgrounds are. So it's our position that even in that point-three acre parcel, which is in the fairgrounds, it's still the commissioners that should make this application.
Thank you, Zach. That's how I read it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can I just ask a clarification question there? So in essence, what you're saying is Bonner County owns the land, the the Fair Board is a tenant. Would that be an accurate interpretation?
The Fair Board manages the land and the uses of the fair. And so essentially, there are, uh, I don't want to break it down. They manage the fairgrounds. But as far as the real property issues, which is what we're at, but which is what is going on today, it's the commissioners that that operate them.
Of Bonner County.
The Bonner County Commissioners.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or thoughts? The only thoughts I have are are, and again, trying to totally divorce any discussion from any kind of specific proposals that uh that may have or may not have come forward yet are this particular piece of ground. Um, when we look at that big list of things that could be used, could be used with conditional um, is it uh um in accordance with our comprehensive plan? Which that particularly is context area three, and as we saw, it can be interpreted in more than one way. And it's kind of what, which of those interpretation weighs heaviest on my mind? And um, I'm not even entirely certain, but I do know the one thing that I that, again, highly unlikely, but you never know, if that ownership of that property were to change hands down the road, I would not want it to be seen as a low, as a um low-density housing uh opportunity. It currently is. Well, first of all, I should mention too that we are, these are two separate proposals that we will consider separately. We will be voting separately on these things. So when we're talking about the larger parcel, I would hate to see that go from a low dense, from a high density to a low-density zoning in the event it ends up changing ownership down the road, because that's one of the things we, I think we should consider.
Mr. Chair, I agree with that.
Yes, Commissioner Boyd.
I agree with that to an extent, uh, because that parcel I is already RR dash one, um, that larger parcel in pink there. Um, so when you look at the grand scheme of things with the size, the approximate two-point-two acres, you know, are are we talking two hundred acres or just two-point-two acres from MUR to RR one? I see your point, but it's such a small parcel. Um, I don't think that would be a big impact. If that makes sense.
It does.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McGrane.
Yeah, I I would add that, you know, I think that the permitted uses, um, you know, provide those those opportunities and the conditional use requirements. Any, whoever does have this parcel and whoever submits an application to do a project against it will have to go through either if they use the permitted use process or if they have a conditional use, which would be an expansion of the existing fairground facilities that they still have to go through the process of getting approved. Uh, so you know, there's, there's still opportunities to review this to make sure that it's being used for the right intended use um, even by going to the RR one.
Other thoughts from Commissioners? Commissioner Dunkle.
Yeah, please, um. Context area three, Amy. Parts of the, parts of this many pieces of property within context area three in this area in my opinion, don't look like they match up with context area three. Is that a fair assessment?
Certainly, the the county-owned parcels don't appear to meet that context area, but um all the multifamily housing along Samuelson does meet the context area, providing a mix of housing.
So is this a situation where we're kind of, we're kind of letting the county property do its own thing because it's always been that way, and it was maybe not identified specifically in the past or the current comp plan?
Right, I I can't address why it wasn't touched on in that context area. Clearly, those uses were existing when that plan was in place. Um, so it doesn't say they are allowed. It doesn't say they're not allowed. It's just silent on those uses.
One thing I would add on that too is it did, it was interesting to note on the list of uses, it did say it had a specific date, these uses as of this date, which was when the last comp plan was adopted. I'm assuming, is that what that date is?
It it predates the comprehensive.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. But so those specific uses at that point in time are the things that it was allowing.
So do we, would it be okay if I was to base some of my decision on the the comp plan doesn't apply specifically to the use already?
I think what you need to look at is how does the zoning district uh, does the zoning district um, address the goals and objectives and context area of the plan? We know the context area doesn't address some of the uses that exist. But does it, does the zoning district? So for example, the MUR district is actually a commercial district. The context area says only residential uses are allowed. Uh, rural residential is a residential district. It's just a low-density residential district. So the context area is could probably go either way, and that's why it's important to look at the goals and policies of the plan and which does the rezone to RR one or MUR uh address better uh the plan? Because you have, you have those two districts and you're you're not introducing a new district. You're just either increasing one or decreasing one.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Boyd.
Um, so you're saying, Amy, to um focus more on the goals than the future land use map, which if that makes sense, Commissioner Dunkle.
I wasn't paying attention, sorry.
Pointing at the comp plan above.
He passed me a note.
I was just clarifying Amy's comment about um focusing more on the goals as opposed to the future land use map.
Future land use map?
Well, context area, that's that's the future land use map. As it is in the comp plan.
Thank you.
And while you Commissioners are thinking of other poignant questions, I have a question um for council perhaps, or um, when I'm looking at the iterations of the proceedings that I have here, initially, it looked like we were going to be voting twice. Now it looks like we're voting once. Are we considering these separately or as one?
I I'm gonna defer to Mr. Jones on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I I think that the uh, commission can present to the um city council a decision on both uh parcels.
Independently, independently. Thank you. Okay. So it seems like most of our discussion so far has focused on the rezon um of the uh multiple use to residential one. Is anybody ready to make any kind? And then we can go back and discuss further the other one. Is anybody ready to make a motion on that proposal? Just asking.
On the smaller one.
No, this is on the larger one.
Okay.
Well, I'll take a motion on either one, I guess, but we've been discussing mostly the larger one and um the larger of the two parcels. Mr. Chair, yes, Commissioner McGrane.
I'll make a motion. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve uh the rezon from MUR to RR one. I move that Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission, after consideration of the criteria and the relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, recommend approval of the requests by the Bonner County to the city of coun- to the city council for a zone change from mixed-use residential to rural residential one for a portion of property identified as tax parcel number RPS three-eight-three-five-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-one-A-A with a development agreement to be approved by the city council that would require a plating action to correspond to the portion of the property to be rezoned in concurrence with considerations of the rezon. The recommendation is based on the findings that the proposed zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan because it supports recreation goal R one, policy E, and recreation goal R three, policy B, by allowing uses such as parks and fairgrounds that provide recreational facilities and opportunities for open space for residents and economic development goal one E, policy B, by allowing uses that support local artisans and farmers and public services goal A, because the lower density allowed under RR one would have less impact on schools, considers this the impact on the school district by allowing lower-density residential. Two, the proposed RR one zone with conditions incorporated into a development agreement regarding the need for a plating action is consistent and compatible with existing zoning and future land uses in the vicinity of the site. The rezoning is extending the current RR one zoning would allow uses compatible with what currently exists on the county-owned property and would allow other uses that are also compatible with surrounding uses. Number three, particular consideration has been given to the effects of this proposed zone change upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing public services within the planning jurisdiction because the rezoning would allow lower-density residential that would have reduced impact on the public schools as well as potential for a school location. The rezoning would allow for the additional parks and open space, police and fire stations, public utilities, facilities, and expansion of fairground facilities. Staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to zone change contained in Idaho Code, section sixty-seven dash six-five-one-one and City Code Title Nine, Chapter Nine.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Yes, Mr. Camp has seconded. Any discussion on the motion on the table?
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Simmons.
Is a I'm a little hesitant to vote for it. Feels like there doesn't necessarily need to be a rush, unless there is, unless there's some time constraint. I don't understand. In that, you know, we look at the comp comprehensive plan, which is supposed to be the backstop against which we're supposed to decide this, and it's just, it was written in a time when most of that stuff wasn't even out there. So in terms of what we're basing the decision on, uh, do we have enough information? That'd be my only question. Um, i- in terms of of uh, there is a stakeholder involved. It would be the 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 um the fairground board themselves. Curious to hear what they have to say, whether that's germane or not on a zoning issue. I I think so um, that's my two cents.
And I guess my two cents to that would be is that um, my understanding is no, there is no time rush on this at all. Um, and in light of that, if we were to deny this rezon, they they can always reapply.
Yeah.
If we approve it, then it, well, it still will go to city council for final approval, but if it were approved now, then we've crossed that bridge and we don't have the opportunity to look at it. With those info, that information you're asking for, if it were to be denied, that information could come to light in a future hearing. But if we approve now, we're doing it without that information.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
And that's, and my concern about approving now is again, I'm thinking beyond fairgrounds. I'm thinking beyond county ownership. What happens if that is not always the case as the county grows? It's very valuable land, might have entirely other purposes, and a new fairgrounds is situated out at the Field of Dreams. I don't know, but but point being is that I would hate to see it have more uh restrictive zoning than what it currently does.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to table this until we can gather more information.
A second.
On just this one specific.
And
There's a motion on the table.
Yes, we have.
Yes, so we'll have to vote on the first motion first before we could um take that second.
The the motion on the table has to be, there has to be action taken on.
Correct.
So it needs to be either voted on or withdrawn. Um, and then the second motion.
So uh, Commissioner McGrane, it was your motion. Would you like us to vote on it or would you like to withdraw it in light of the other motion?
Let's vote on it.
Okay. So we will we will have a a roll call vote then.
Yep.
If there's no further discussion. Okay, Adam Clerk.
Commissioner Hastings.
Uh, I vote no.
Commissioner Dunkle?
No.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner McGrane?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
No.
No.
Commissioner Benner?
No.
Mr. Our Chairman Hastings, the nose habit.
Would we like to?
Yeah, Mister Chair.
Yes.
Do we open up discussion again? Are we in a?
Well, are we at a point where we can, we certainly can, we could open discussion or we can make another motion and then discuss that motion.
Yeah, I'm curious to, because I threw out my opinion. To the board, I'm curious on on other thoughts and.
Yeah.
If I could have a quick conversation to answer that.
Yes. Keeping us focused.
You guys can proceed.
Thank you.
So, Mister Chair.
Yes.
So, yeah, I would. Just what additional um. Information based off of what we know today, are you looking for to be able to make a decision?
Yeah, I I think about the narrowing of uses on that parcel of land in a future use case.
So so I would challenge that is, are we actually narrowing uh the uses based off of what currently exists there? Cause it gives the option to expand. Fairground facilities with a conditionally used permit. Right, so. Keeping in context of what currently is happening in that location, right, it still gives it. Future expansion possibilities. To expand fairground. Uses.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Boyd.
And I would just argue again with the two point two acres that it's, you know. You've got that major acreage of that lot to the north of it that it's, you know, two point two. Is that really gonna make or break? You know, a use for the future.
Yeah, I I would add to that and Amelia that. Uh, looking at the Bonner County G I S that there's. A parcel to the direct um. West of the judicial center there that is. Four acres uh that looks fairly vacant, there's, looks like there's a bunch of vehicles parked on it right now. Um, so it seems like that there is room for expansion um as needed.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Would it be helpful for discussion if we pull back at the staff report that shows the allowed uses in RR one? And M U R.
I would allow the commissioners to say if they think that would be helpful. I see a few head nods, so please.
Yes.
Yes. I know I have it up here.
Here are the uses allowed in the rural residential one. And the uses allowed in the mixed use residential.
Commiss- um, Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Boyd.
So Amy, just to clarify, in RR dash one, you can have home dwellings, it's just a um. Parcel one acre, I think is the.
Half an acre.
Minimum, yeah. Yeah.
Well, it it doesn't specifically say it there, but uh in the M U R.
In the M U R.
In the M U R zoning, if I want a half an acre lot for my home, can I still do it?
Sorry.
If I want a half an acre lot for my home, can I still do it?
Yes.
Yes, and that's why it's considered more restrictive to go the other way. Anything you can do in the RR one, you could probably most, at least not any.
Chairman Hastings.
Yes, Commissioner Camp.
In this iteration of the lot size. With the setbacks, it probably wouldn't be attainable.
Yeah.
Would staff agree with that?
Well, it said um, the property you're looking at or the proposed RR one. And it's a two point two acre site.
I'm talking about um. The smaller piece uh RR one to M U R.
Right.
But I don't think there's anything you can do with the required setbacks.
Correct.
It's twenty feet wide.
Uh, and pardon my thought when I asked the question earlier. That right now there's a playground. Uh, adjacent to it under the rezone, that playground could not expand. Um, in the current iteration, it could. And I'm not saying that's a critical thing for for us to consider, because that playground could expand in other directions, but that was.
And just back to the question of the size, remember you're attaching that to a larger person. So you're, even though it looks like a sliver of property is being attached to that larger property to the south.
Which gives you more options. Yeah. It's not an individual.
Uh, and the the point about the playground is on the RR one. Uh, parcel which is a, it's a permitted use on that parcel. And it's right up against that existing fence, so I, unless that fence gets relocated. Probably the only way that that playground could get extended would be to the west or the north.
Correct. Feasibly, yeah. So um. At this point, the rezone of the larger parcel. Is that um? To get a sense, um, I mean, we. Do most of us want to wait till we have more information?
Uh, Mister Chair, I, to me, the point that Ben brought up, I mean. Sort of makes sense, meaning if if we could wave our magic wand, what information would we produce that would?
Sway your.
Right.
Decision.
Yeah.
And no direct answer to that.
I do not have a direct answer to that.
Right.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Um, just if the motion is going to be postponed action. We need specific direction on what information you want us to bring forward.
Correct. Does anybody want to attain uh entertain a motion again then? One way or the other, or?
But I think where I'm hung up, Mister Chairman. The context area three in the comp plan doesn't specifically. Fit. And I don't like how. We're kind of overlooking that. Because it's not. It's not correct, in my opinion. Because it is overlooked. So I feel like we're. Possibly doing two wrong things and gonna say that it's right. Um, as far as like. The proposed use for the rezone or whatever, whatever the, whatever it may be, I don't really have a. A feeling either way on that, because I think. Normally, this would be legal and allowable. And there's nothing that really says to me that. It should not be allowed. Besides that. The comp plan doesn't.
Not conform.
It just doesn't. It's just not right. That's my only issue with it. Otherwise, I think. Uh, another opinion would be that going from mixed use to rural residential one is is. Is a lower value property. Um, there's, there's less uses and. I do think it is kind of strange that. That the possible proposed use. Doesn't fit into mixed use. Feel like it should, but for some reason it doesn't. Uh, cause mixed use means mixed use, in my opinion, which. I don't know, but then we have a gray area on. What that. Where that proposed mixed use actually fits in with our code. So. I don't know, that just feels really. Odd. So I I don't feel really strongly one way or the other besides the comp plan not being direct. On this specific area. And I know that we don't always. Follow. Terms of the comp plan, everybody's well aware of my. Issues with that. So, we're totally. Yeah, it's just, it's funny that it does say grid type street patterns in in this area. Has nothing to do with this, by the way. But um, but to. To your point, yeah, what other information could we bring up? I really don't know either. Except.
What you heard saying. Sounds like you have a motion. You have reasons that you would make a motion to deny. If you do not believe it needs the comprehensive.
I I was just gonna say that I will help us clarify our thinking in the form of a motion. And and. I don't know which way it's gonna go, but we'll just, we'll just see, because I would make a motion. Uh, I will make a motion that the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho code and Sandpoint City Code. Recommend denial of the request to city council by Bonner County. For a zone change from mixed use residential to the rural residential one. For a portion of the property identified as tax parcel number R P S three eight three five zero zero one zero zero one A A. Based on the findings that the proposed zone change is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Because the RR one zoning district is low density, large residential lot district. And does not support land use policy A housing goal, H one policy D. Or public service goal one policy, policy C. It does not support the master planned context area goal of increasing density in context area three.
Mister Chair, you're asking for that motion.
That, no, I'm, I'm making that motion. Create, oh, I thought I could make a motion, no?
I think that the. It might be cleaner if someone else would, if someone else were to make that motion.
Okay.
But it's, I think you can make a motion, you're not the mayor, I think that the, that the. Confusion here is that the mayor typically doesn't make motions, so you have a vote on this commission. Whereas the mayor doesn't have a vote unless there is a tiebreaker vote.
Correct.
On that grounds, I think that. That you can make the motion, however, in a abundance of cautions, probably a little bit cleaner if someone else makes it.
Thank you.
Analysis and.
Thank you, so to keep it clean, would anybody else care to make that motion of denial for those, that purpose?
I I would just. Want to add that we need to be specific in what is lacking.
And I was.
In the denial, we need to be specific.
I'm waiting to see if somebody else, a- and if not, then we need a motion in the other direction.
Um, no, uh, Chairman. Uh, I moved at the same point planning commission. Planning and zoning commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho code and Sandpoint city code. Recommend denial of the request to city council by Bonner County for a zone change. From mixed use residential to resi- rural residential one. For the portion of property identified as tax parcel number R P S three eight three five zero zero one zero zero A A. Excuse me, zero zero one A A. Should I repeat that?
I think you're good.
Okay.
As in print.
As printed here, based on the findings that one, the proposed zone change is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Because the RR one zoning district is a low density. Large lot residential district and does not support land use policy A. Housing goal H one. Policy D or public services goal one policy C. And that wraps, that sums it up for me.
Do we have a second of that motion of denial?
Second.
Any discussion before we vote?
Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Boyd.
Um. I think I would. Recommend a postponement rather than just a flat out denial if there was something else that. If there was other information that other commissioners were. Hoping to acquire.
And and we're in a discussion on the motion right now, so.
Yes.
Um, that meaning that we would have to vote against this motion in order for that to happen.
Postponement, yes.
And we just kind of did that and no one identified any additional information that they would. Want, so that's why I don't see what they, well, two things, I don't see what the proposed postponement. Of a decision would make. A denial of this is not a forever thing um at some point in the future. As things change, it just would come before us and the city council again. Either way, the decision we make tonight is a recommendation to the city council. But again, as I said, if we, if we. Go the zone change, then it's not coming back. If we don't do the zone change, we might see this again with more information, with more input from other involved parties. And we might decide in a different direction at that time. But I guess based upon what we have now and that nobody had any kind of specific information that they were looking for. That, that's when I'm thinking, we kind of already went down that road and it didn't work.
Uh, Mister Chair.
Uh, yes.
So even if we recommend denial, it still goes to city council.
Correct.
And they could.
Correct.
They could override this.
Yes.
But would not without any new information, right? They have to go on the same.
There would be a public hearing, another public hearing, but yeah. They would hold their own public hearing. Yeah.
Okay.
And other people might choose to participate in that that aren't participating here this evening, but that's.
Of course.
Any other discussion? Well, we'll, oh. Call for the vote then and we'll see where we go. So this is, we're voting for a motion for denial. Okay, just to clarify.
Commissioner Benner?
I vote no. Or yes, excuse me.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. McGrane?
No.
Mr. Boyd?
No.
Mr. Camp?
No.
Mr. Dunkel?
Yes.
Mr. Hastings?
Yes.
The yeses have it, Mr. Hastings.
Okay, and. So that was on the larger of the two parcels, so our recommendation. Split vote to the city council is to deny this request. We will now move on to the rezone of a smaller parcel. We have. New discussion on that.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Dunkle.
So is, is it possible to know a little more about? What is happening exactly in this location right now and then? Are we just cleaning up something that maybe should have been done a long time ago?
That is my understanding is that there is a fence line. Um, that is enclosing the property to the south. That is on the parcel to the north. So they're trying to include that piece. With M U R and the remainder of the sheriff facilities.
So the use currently is not allowed.
Depend, it's a yard. It looks like it's encroaching into the RR one. Zone, yes.
Although there's no development other than the fence on that piece of property, so there's not a. Non-conforming use of it per se.
There's not a structure.
Right, there's no structures, I should say.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Hey, Amy, do you, do you have the zoning map for that entire area that you can pull up?
So it's this piece is currently. RR one, but the fence. Encroaches into it. So that's the piece that they're looking to attach to the remainder of RR one to the south, or sorry, M U R.
Yeah, and to the south there, is that, I see a portion that looks white and a portion of it looks blue?
That is farther south um. And that there is single family and uh multiple family to the south of. Um, what is known as Reggie the Center.
Yes.
The request to pull up a larger um map of zoning.
Would you like to see that? Yes.
Yeah, as please.
So these, this is the area we're looking at. Oh, sorry.
Okay, there we go, good.
Sorry.
We're not seeing what you're seeing.
Then what is? Zone RR one to the north. What is owned M U R to the south? It is a piece here of about point. Two, point two eight, point three acres. That is being requested to be zoned M U R from RR one. See what we're talking about.
There you go.
There you go.
This is the fence.
There we go. The discussions on this one. My thoughts, this one is a little bit cleaner, if you will, in that it's. It's to try and make the zoning. Congruent with the current use. Which on a small strip of property like this is probably not. Um. Any kind of precedent setting decision.
Yeah, Mister Chairman, my my comment is.
Mister McGrann.
It's a, it's Bonner County property, uh, both parcels are, and so, you know, eventually they gotta all work together to figure out what they're gonna do in these areas anyways, so. Um, yeah, I think it's uh, an easy one to. To move forward with.
Any other thoughts or anybody want to make a motion?
Mister Chair, just a question, what is that, what is that fence now?
It's security fence for the.
Okay, that's what was.
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I move that the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission African, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho code and Sandpoint City Code. Recommend approval of the request to city council by a Bonner County for a change. Our zone change from rural residential dash one to mixed use residential. For a portion of property identified as tax parcel number R P S. Zero 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 three six six zero one A. With a development agreement to be approved by city council that would acquire a plating action to correspond to the portion of property to be rezoned in concurrence with consideration of the rezone. The recommendation is based on the findings that one, the proposed zone change is in conformance with comprehensive plan because it supports. Land use policy A and D and economic development goal E dash three by allowing a wide range of housing. Number two, the proposed M U R zone with conditions incorporated into a development agreement regarding the need for plating action. Is consistent and compatible with existing zoning and future land uses in the vicinity of the site. The M U R zone is consistent with the existing public safety facilities on county owned property and residential uses across North Boyer Road. Three, particular consideration has been given to the effects of this proposed zone change upon. The delivery of services by any political subdivision providing public services within the planning jurisdiction. The requested rezoning is a small area that will bring the exist- existing public safety uses into conformance while having no impact on the school district. Four, staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to zone changes contained in Idaho code sixty seven dash six five one one. And Sandpoint City Code title nine, chapter nine.
We have the boot, we have the second. Adam Clerk, if you would call, roll call.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner McGrann?
Yes.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone who attended this evening and with no further business before the commission. The meeting is now adjourned at seven oh three P M.